Do you have any reports or suggestions on Kepler and McFeeder's Bend?
I do have a couple of things to discuss and I'm not expecting any finalization, finalization of anything or any recommendations moving forward, but I do want to bring the board up to speed on what's been asked about the properties if that makes sense. We have had a letter of interest from Buren Missionary Baptist Church and they're located adjacent to the Kepler property on Buren and they are looking at a potential church ministry there focusing on education, recreation, family events, those types of things and potentially, Pastor mentioned anything from respite care to athletic programs to Saturday and weekend events, dramas, drama presentations, healthcare resources and a potential private school. Just primary, it sounded like maybe, primary grades, preschool, that, that stuff. I'm not real sure about that, but he has expressed an interest in that. He's a 501(c) nonprofit, of course, being a church. So if we do move forward with surplusing and optioning off that particular property, we do have at least one interested party. And as far as McFeeder's Bend goes, I would like to make a recommendation from staff that we would be in very good interest to keep McFeeder's Bend for Pathways and for H-CBA offering services at the upper end of our county. Pathways, as you know, is located down here in Rogersville. If we have students from Volunteer or one of the middle schools up at the upper end of the county that are expelled, they feel that and they are remanded to alternative education, they have to find transportation into Rogersville currently. For some of our students, particularly up at Volunteer, that's a long drive, day after day when they're used to attending at the high school. So to ease that burden, I do think that there's a shared interest within the county to offer those services at McFeeder's. I talked to Mrs. Menzey, Sheriff Menzey, the principal of Pathways and H-CBA. She did think that in a rotation basis, she should rotate half of her teachers' half a week and not add any staff cost to operating McFeeder's Bend campus as an alternative center for the upper end of the county. She didn't think that it would take any more FTE, no more staffing costs to offer tutoring and support services for students that are currently in H-CBA whose parents and/or students need to come in and work with a teacher on site, particularly for tutoring or academic support either. So we would look at operating, there's 10 total classrooms there, we obviously would probably use the office, three or four different classrooms. There's a potential we could use one or two classrooms as professional libraries and professional development classrooms where we could perform model lessons at that end of the county instead of teachers from that end of the county coming down here. We could offer our coaches to do those types of things there if we had the facilities. At this point, we would support recommending to the board that we keep McFeeder's Bend and use it for those services, knowing that that does not come at any additional cost other than electric and probably Wi-Fi, those types of things. We're already currently landscaping and keeping up on that, maintaining the property. It's in better shape than Kepler and we have relocated all of the staff from both of those sites so we don't have any additional staffing costs at this point. Additionally, there is an interest from the Volunteer Firemen's Association to utilize those classroom spaces, a couple of those classroom spaces, the cafeteria and the gymnasium in after-school hours, providing for certification for volunteer firefighters, those that want to get into the program, potentially working with Brandon and CTD and opening those types of certification courses to our students that are interested in fire science or that are in our current fire science program. But that would be after school and we would, if approved, we would enter into a memorandum of understanding facility use agreement with the Volunteer Firemen's Association for those purposes down the road. As far as what we would need to do, I did talk to Louis Thomason, Chris McCarty is an attorney there, Larry Giordano, we've worked with both of them before, and Caitlin there in the office and I did ask Caitlin Beal for some guidance in what we need to do as a board for settling that property. And her recommendation is that the board would need to make a motion to declare either or as surplus property to instigate an appraisal, which is optional, but she did recommend that just so that the board knew what the properties were worth, either or both, and then determine limitations if we go into the auction process as a surplus property and that would be considering minimum bid amount, reserve bids, whether we're looking at surplusing or auctioning the property as is, et cetera.
Are there any appraisals in the last five years or so on?
No, not that I know of at all, not enough foreseeable look back that we've performed.
What do we value that asset at, like on the books, do you have any idea?
We just met with our insurance, our property insurance appraiser and we probably have an updated list coming to us here in the next couple of weeks. Cause he just asked us about the update on the two properties, that we had closed the schools and then any additional upgrades or that type of thing. We did fill him in on the turf, which he was unaware of, so that's going to be part of our liability disclosure, those types of things. So I can get that to you probably in the next two weeks updated as far as what the insurance value of it.
I was just curious, it's not compressing.
Replacement value.
We have to do the appraisal, it looks like.
Yeah.
If we were to surplus one of both schools, what do we do with the solar panels?
It's a land lease, technically it would have to be written to whatever agreement that we did with the buyers, because they have to take that land lease over. It's still under contract through the TBA, you host them until 2032.
Can we separate that portion of property out and retain ownership of the solar panels?
Probably could, but you're talking about having to have a survey done and separating it out through, that would be a separate process, I'm sure.
We did ask the comptroller pertinent to our QSCAB loans at both properties, one of which is going to be finalized this year and I think it's a portion of equipment at both sites that will be done at that earlier phase. The comptroller's advice was that if we operate either as a school, we are in good standing. If we close the properties as school and no one uses them and we continue to make the loan payments on the QSCAB, we're in good standing. Third and fourth options are that if we sell the property prior to the payment of those QSCAB loans, we can either negotiate a prepayment amount with the state, which is allowable, or develop a plan to move any of the QSCAB financed equipment to another location and that plan would need to be drawn up prior to the sale of property. Now, considering that those HVAC equipment units are approaching 12 to 15 years old, the labor entailed in taking them down, moving them and installing them somewhere that's probably not set up for that type of equipment is probably not worth it and I would recommend at that point probably if we're in that situation to go ahead and enter a prepayment of those loan amounts.
So we couldn't use any of the HBACs, say, at the middle school gymnasiums that have no air conditioning?
You're talking about three 10,000 units, it would take probably eight in a gym to cool it and you just don't have that space. Those at both schools, because they don't have natural gas, are heat pumps, they're not, the normal parts that we use are gas-fired furnaces and mechanical cooling. Those are actual heat pumps, so they use, you know, they're not gas-fired, they're not near as efficient. The only place that we actually could move those to would be Hawkins Elementary and you're talking about quite a bit of work as far as electrical and everything goes and if we're going to do that as a project, we probably don't, like Matt said, you probably don't want to spend that much on it to move 15-year-old equipment over there.
I'll go back to the solar panels, so if we surplus either of the schools, the solar panels would go with the property?
The solar panels do not belong to us. The solar panels.
Okay, let me back up and ask the question, the revenues from those solar panels would go to who?
If we, it depends on how you write that, you can either survey off the property and keep the property and just sell the building and us keep the property where the solar panels are. That can be done and then we would get revenue from that.
And what is the revenue sheet?
It's all based on kilowatts. We have 20 sites and I think it's 43,500, somewhere right in there for all 20 sites. It averages about 1,275 sites.
Per month?
About 1,275 bucks.
Per month?
Oh no.
Per year? I thought that was going to be this, what was 50,000?
Oh. 40,500. Well, it's all based on, like, some sites are bigger than others.
Right.
So it's all based on the size of the site.
What's the size of that Kepler?
Right off the top of my head, I don't know if that would be.
Are we selling electricity?
We sell all of them, none of that electricity goes up. Let me explain how these solar panels work, okay? The solar panels are on our front, the solar panels generate electricity. That electricity is sold to Host Electric, is put on the grid and sold to Host Electric. By, it used to be Birdseye, then it was Sunny Solar, I don't know what it's called now, it's on its third name.
So it sits there.
So all that electricity is sold to them, they give us a payment based on the size of the array that is on that property. So you're paid based off, if it's a 50 kW, if it's 100 kW, whatever size site there is, that's how they pay us. No matter if it produces power, if it's offline for six months, it doesn't change our payment, our payment is the same. We are leasing them a piece of property to put their equipment.
Kind of like you would do a cellphone.
Yes, like a cellphone.
It's a set price.
It's a set price, no matter what.
And that runs out?
The promotional rate runs out next year. So the first 10 years of the agreement, we got what was called the average retail rate and a promotional rate, I don't know what that promotional rate was, but the average rate that we will be getting as of March of 22 will be getting 11 cents a kilowatt.
So that won't be a set rate, it depends on?
That will be a set rate from back then.
11 cents?
11 cents a kilowatt hour.
But right now, it's just $100 per leasing.
Well, he's not going to go.
Okay.
So that was for the first 10 years of the agreement, it was a 20-year agreement, so now 21 years and six months, it got extended. So the second half of that is what we'll get the 11.
And it's based 11 cents per kilowatt hour?
That is.
So if we surplus, say, Kepler, or, well, either one, and if we surplus one with schools, then whoever buys the property, if we elect to sell the entire property, then they have to work with the company, which is?
It's a company that's based out of North Carolina, it's changed humans about four times. It was Birdseye, then it was Sunny Solar.
Oh, okay.
And I don't, I don't know the name of it.
So they have to make an agreement of their own and in, say, 2032, they can, this company can come out there and just rip out all the solar panels and say, well, we're done with you, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But they could say the same thing to us?
The original agreement says that we can opt to keep the solar panels for our personal use, but.
The maintenance.
The average life of the solar panels, 20 years.
Okay.
Our contract's 21 years and six months, so I don't know that we want them.
Is it worth it to parcel those out? I mean, is it like, cause I'm trying to think of McFeeder's Bend, it's on the side, like if you're looking at a tangosh and it's on that little.
It's in between the actual school building and the baseball field, it's in between the two.
So the middle of the gym, school, baseball field. So it'd probably be like a detriment to sell it if you parcel that out, right?
Yeah. Personally?
That particular school site, yes. Logistically, looking at how it's laid out and the lot, what the lot lines would be after you parcel that out, yeah.
Another question is, let me go back, cause it was, yeah, where are the batteries? Then when you make the solar energy, don't you have a battery that feeds you, what does it feed into?
Hold on, if you're doing it at home, you are storing that electricity.
Okay.
But.
In some cases.
This one, you're going straight onto the grid. They have exchanges, just like at our shop, they've got exchanges there, it goes straight onto the grid.
Okay.
So we're not storing.
It goes out to the grid, so it shows that production.
And so we're not storing any of that energy that's created at either school site, it's just going right back to the electric company.
Okay. See, I learned something today. But now, are we using Kepler now? Because I know we've been cleaning it, I ought to, so we're not using it for any source whatsoever.
In fact, it was cleaned out, the final wave of clean out was done today and there's a couple of items in the gymnasium that are being picked up by the school sites for all intents and purposes of the gym.
So what would the board, board's preference here, we've got some decisions.
Boy, can I switch gears and go back and ask a question, I was kind of going to yell at them with the solar. Okay, I want to make sure I'm getting this right, the Feeder's Bend, if we continue to use it as an educational facility, okay, would that be contradictory to what we, the reason we're changing, closing school in the first place?
No, because we're not, we don't have any staffing cost there at all and we would not have even with our use as described earlier, because we're using existing staff. We had, at one time, we had a principal over there that was above and beyond the BEP amount. We had teachers and we had support staff that were above and beyond the BEP amount. All of those staffing members have been relocated and are currently in the current FTE allotment for the county, so they replaced retirees, those that went to other locations, any vacancies that we had over the spring and summer when we closed Kepler and McFeeder's, those staff were absorbed into the FTE county.
So what we were saying initially for them is because of the expense.
Yes.
It's why we were closing versus the building upkeep and maintenance and.
Correct, so if you look at Kepler, the proposed maintenance cost of ongoing at Kepler between eight and 10 years from now would have been in the millions, it would have been probably 1.8 to $2 million.
Now I got Kepler.
Roofing, flooring, shoring up the foundation on one part of the building, those types of things, so there were some potential future savings realized when we closed the school sites down, particularly that at Kepler, an ongoing future maintenance cost. The biggest expense of both sites was the staffing costs that were large amounts of local dollars, local tax dollars being funded because they were outside the BEP ratio.
That's what I wanted clarity on, to make sure we're not going back against what we had said initially and then continue to use the school.
No.
And kind of the same man.
No, and I understand where that's coming from, because if you close a school and then you go back and you staff it for other purposes, but we're staffing it under our current budget, I'm not adding any staff, we wouldn't add any expense there other than what we're already doing and that is keeping the site open. So we have electric to the site right now, we would add Wi-Fi, we have taken Wi-Fi down because it's not educational anymore and we get a special rate for internet access and we had to close that off at both school sites because they're not schools anymore. But we would add that.
Okay, I just want clarity on, to make sure that that wasn't, was that contradicting myself about continuing to use it as a school?
In my opinion, no, because there's no added cost in working it as H-CBA or Pathways because the service is already being ran down here, we're just splitting the services.
Well, we still have big ticket items as far as maintenance and repair of McFeeder's Bend School.
McFeeder's was minimal and if you look at the Keith Brewer study, it was minimal in large-scale projects coming up compared to Kepler. Kepler had some big duties coming up as far as roofing, tearing the roofing off, restructuring it, architect and engineer.
We have those at McFeeder's.
Oh, so we messed this up.
Can we, yeah, just for the purpose of the document, I just want to make sure we're out of one discussion because I don't want to shorten the debate, because I think part of what you're asking about is what Kathy's addressing, is that, do we have any large-scale maintenance issues or concerns moving forward in the future in the future?
The bathrooms were redone and the plumbing was redone to the outer wall in 2014 when I first got here, we redid those bathrooms. The only cost that would be, would be the roof, at some point you will have the roofing. We do have a few leaks up there right now.
When you talk about roofing, it was not as detailed as the roofing project that would have resulted at Kepler.
Oh, no, 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 it's just a flat single ply roof like we're doing on those.
Wasn't there something down in the cafeteria too? I'm just going back with, it was the back door there.
They did do a power.
The entryway, you couldn't get through or you could, something was there and it had to be recently, but like within the last seven, eight years.
They did do a power upgrade, the switch gear was in 2010 or 2011. It was one of those with the QSCAB project that they redid the electrical on it, so most of, most of the infrastructure there is relatively new as far as that part goes. But like I say, at some point, yes, it will have to be redone.
I think that, to your point Kathy, and I think Judy was getting to this too, what I would propose if the board were to entertain an idea of using McFeeder's for those purposes, again, no staffing, increased costs, nothing over the operational budget as it is now, would be that we would look at the feasibility of using it for those purposes year by year. So if we committed to it and we opened it back up for H-CBA and Pathways, let's say at the end of this nine weeks and saw how it benefited or did not benefit our constituents or our community, we could then make a decision at the end of the year for the following year. At that point, you could say, based on the data that Matt's bringing forward, we don't think that that's feasible or needed to keep McFeeder's Bend and then we proceed forward with the surplus at that time. So if we agree to it now, we're not looking at a five or 10-year agreement, it's just allowing us to use one of our existing properties for the benefit of what we think our stakeholders may need at that end of the county.
Now, hadn't there been talk, I don't remember talk with us, but about the, you called it the professional library up there, have we been moving books up there already?
Yeah, they've got a book storage for two purposes right now, for the professional library and for the mobile book center.
That's what I was getting at, because I know, I think I saw the bus up there maybe in Paxton, which I think the mobile bus is, the library is a wonderful, wonderful idea. We had one when I was a kid and it was, it wasn't through the school system, but it was a great thing when the bus came around and took us, so I love that.
I think, I think moving forward, we've got some questions in front of us and the first one that we would need to answer as a committee's board board is, cause one answer is going to feed another question, so if I may, I just made some notes here, we need to make a recommendation as to how, if we want to surplus or not.
I'm not thrilled with what we.
No, no.
Is there any positives about keeping Kepler as a, you know, I'm not big on selling property to you, the truth, I want them to sell one in front of Rogersville Middle School, they're not making more land and is there any reason that we would want to use that property out there, that building for, you know, just like we're talking about using McFeeder's Bend for Pathways, for professional library, for the Volunteer Fire Department, CTE to go in and teach class, so is there any reasons, any things that we could use at Kepler to keep that property, that's a good piece of property?
The property value, you make a good point on, however the.
The building is not.
The building itself is the issue.
I've not been in it a long time.
Now, don't get me wrong, it was completely safe and upgraded enough to operate it as a school through last year. Ongoing costs though, the longer we keep it, those costs, especially with it being uninhabited, buildings tend to deteriorate, so.
Right, it's just like I may have seen.
I did ask, I did ask Bill Killen, who approached us with the Volunteer Firemen's Association to use McFeeder's Bend, if they were being interested in using the other property and the need, the need is on that end of the county as far as usable space and classroom space.
We would also have to, at Kepler, because it does have a sewer treatment plant, we would have to redo the sewer treatment plant and the water lines going in.
So the two biggest costs in the future.
Shannon was that already cleaned out and taken care of.
Yeah, they pump those every year, that goes through, that's child nutrition, we don't do that.
But there was something about that a few years ago about the grease pit.
Water resources, you know, has met with us and if we were to reuse that property for anything associated with the school, we'd have to get new permits and probably do a lot of upgrades to the sewer treatment plant because once that ceases and then starts back up, you have to reconstruct and re.
At one time, there were actually gas pumps out there for the buses and I think that was all pulled up and back when they'd get it from the little stores around, that everything had to be dug up and I don't know what you would do.
Use oil and testing.
Yeah, but, yeah, there was.
But that is, those are good questions and again, if something comes up from the board, this, as far as the timeline, going back to your statement earlier, we're not under the gun as far as the timeline is concerned, we can take our time to discuss this and consider other options. The only thing I would caution you on if, for example, the Boys and Girls Club were to use McFeeder's Bend during the day, if it goes to another instructional or educational setting, we're on the hook for those QSCAB, we can't continue paying on it if another instructional or educational agency uses it during the day. We can use it, we still own, QSCAB still gets paid, if it sits vacant, then we continue paying on the QSCAB, it's fine too. But if it goes to another instructional or educational agency, that's when we either have to do one of those plans, pre-negotiate a payoff or relocate the equipment. If we relocate the equipment, the building's not usable to the new inhabitant or renter in this case and it wouldn't benefit either party, I don't think, unless I'm missing something.
It goes back to my question, it's not to make a decision tonight, but do we, question number one, would we surplus or not? Question number two, if we do surplus, what do we do with the solar? Question number three, if we surplus, what's the cost to sell the property? Cause we, you know, we have to have an appraisal, what's that going to cost? And then how do we want to sell it? Do we want to do it by CLB's, do we want to have an auction, or do we want to put it in the renter's hands? Then the question number four, and these were just real quick notes, what is the cost for the buyout for the QSCAB? You know, those are some questions that I think we need answers to, but we are the ones that have to answer the first one. So depending on how the board wants to move forward, we don't have to make any recommendations tonight, we don't have to put it on the agenda for our next board meeting, but at some point we do need to be more informed as board members and then make a decision so we can make a recommendation moving forward.
In the address of your number four cost of buyouts, we specifically have asked that question and even the comptroller can't tell us because it's based on, those payoff rates are based off of federal loans that are specific to educational interest rates and savings generated over time by putting in this new HVAC and electrical equipment. So they can't even tell us until we get to the point where we're negotiating a buyout. So, they can't even tell us until we get to the point where we're negotiating a buyout. What I would recommend is, one is, I think one phase, Shannon, I think, uh, the, one phase I think has been paid off late this fall, maybe by December. The second one is another two or three years out, I think. But what I can do is I can start working with them, if the board desires to get a better ballpark figure of that cost, I would recommend that we go ahead and continue paying this current one off, take it through December, finish that loan obligation and then see if we can get a better idea of the payoff of the remaining amount. And then that would, that would at least give you a ballpark figure to work with.
All right, so it's board members, I mean, I'm kinda just laying out a roadmap here for us to follow. What, what's your suggestions? What, what would you guys like to see?
I don't have a problem putting stuff in surplus, like especially Kepler, though I, and I haven't been in it or anything, but I mean, like, it sounds like it's in not the best shape.
I'd like to go out there and see.
I think keeping something like that, deferred maintenance and all that, you're talking about.
And we was talking about the beer church maybe wanting to put a private school in there? Would that be a great competition with us? Now, we fight with BEP money as it is, okay?
It sounds like it's gonna be like a church preschool contest.
But if we surplus it and auction it and they get it at auction or by CLO bid, then they can do whatever they want to. Even though it isn't, we, but we can't bar anyone from, I guess we could. I, no. We can't sell to a certain group.
Here's what would be detrimental to anybody buying that for potential school use. They would have to, they'd have the same hurdles we are up against if we were to reopen it today. They'd have to reconstruct and recertify the separate. They'd have to recertify probably the roofing moving forward because we would have to start on some long-term repairs now to stay ahead of some of the potential roof issues that were in existence moving forward. Again, it was, yeah, it was completely safe, it's been patched up, it's been rerooft, but structurally it needs some of, it needs to be addressed here in the next quarter, five years.
You mentioned like several other things that are potentially planned like in the next phase.
Yeah.
Just almost like a fellowship.
Kinda like a family life center type of, yeah.
Sometimes if, if it's too much, you know, stuff for them to fix, they might get into it as scrap of the school life and anyway, a lot of churches don't understand, you know, you got staffing and all the business.
The, the gym, the pavilion, the playground would be perfectly fine for them to use, but it's when you get into the restroom facilities, the water, that, the kitchen, that's where you're gonna have trouble because right now, nothing can go to the sewer plant. I mean, it's cut out. It needs to be repaired. And when I say repaired, it's, don't have to be replaced, it's twenty-six years old now.
The, uh, the lease of the solar panels, if we were to sell it, could, you know, that church is probably not gonna wanna take over that lease, I, I would imagine, I don't know.
I think they would too.
I mean, maybe they will, but. Could we come back then and say, hey, come get your stuff, you're asked the lease, like, could we break it?
I, I don't know that you'd get them to break the lease because that, that's one of the, I don't know if you've seen the, the actual structures that they get those solar panels on, but it's, it's, it's not cheap.
A lot of work.
Okay, it's, it's all hot dip galvanized steel, it's all put in the ground, I mean.
We haven't noticed it.
There's a lot of work goes into putting up a set of those solar arrays, which is why they make it for such a long period of time. They make it for the life of the solar panel. Once they put them in, they don't wanna move them. So, but the, the actual funds that we get off of them, if we're gonna have to have somebody come out and survey that property and we're gonna lay out new lines, I think you'll spend as much as you're gonna make, uh, a year. I mean, if it's a big, if it's a big array, you'll only make twelve hundred bucks a year, so.
But we could just sign that over to the, to the potential buyer and let them take the lease over?
That's, that would be my recommendation is to let it go with the property.
And then it's up to the buyer to, to grill shake turns of, with, with the.
Right.
The third party regarding rates and length of turn and all that stuff. It's not an easy process. I think your, I think your questions are very good. I've written them down and I wanna review them just to make sure, so. Board needs to make a recommendation at some point regarding the status of the properties to surplus or not, that's the first big crush. If it's surplus, either property, what do we do with the solar? Do we have the property appraised? What's that, uh, cost? And then, uh, do we use a realtor or do we, um, auction it off? And if we auction it, what type of auction, what are the parameters of the auction? And then the cost of, uh, of any buyouts.
Yeah. Cause we've, we've already determined, we really can't use any equipment from this.
Did, uh, Doug say anything about what he would offer for the property at Kepler?
No.
Or did he ask you what we wanted for it?
He did, and I said that, uh, I couldn't answer that because I don't know what it's worth current, in the current market and I, and I would assume that the board, if we go down that road, would want some sort of appraisal done. I did tell him that, uh, as far as we could tell, everything's been paid for except for the, some of the equipment on site. And, uh, he asked what type of equipment and I said, well, we have long-term loans on some of the HVAC, so we would potentially be either removing that or looking at negotiating.
So, TVA didn't give us those, did they? The HVACs?
Oh, no, 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 no.
See, I thought that they did, uh, you know, TVA did a lot of stuff for Kepler at one time.
That's, that was actually, that was actually a bond issue.
And how long did we have on that?
That's what we were talking about, one comes due this late fall and then one is extending on into two or three years.
And that's probably for the HVAC, so we'd have to take those off when we are.
The, the problem is that. The problem is that the grants cross over, there's, there's some equipment at both locations on this grant that's gonna be paid off in December and there's some equipment at both sites that's on the one that's due in two years. So, it's not a clean cut, one payout, one's on. That's the, part of the, part of the issue at hand too, you know, that's a good question, resonating.
Well, any recommendations from the board pertaining to Kepler and McFeeters Bend?
I don't feel comfortable putting Kepler for surplus as far as making a recommendation from that. And then with the idea of, uh, using McFeeters as, you know, kind of a latency, cause we could still come back next, you know, this time next year. If that, if that's not working, do the same thing and surplus it as well.
You know, it's, it's, it's still a very, very difficult situation for a lot of families and, you know, our citizens on that end of the county closing two schools at one time. And when we close the schools, we said we were gonna surplus it. But if we have an opportunity to use at least one facility to benefit at least of its county and continue using it in, within the jurisdiction of the school system, with, at no extra cost, is that a possibility? But I just wanna be totally transparent here, do we just go ahead and surplus both of them? Laying, laying those two options, it's, here again, it's not an easy decision. I personally believe in having opportunities cause we've got a structure that's fundamentally sound. We have another structure that's not as sound, that we know, we've had experts come in, give reports and.
And that was in the future, uh, that they were fine at this time. Are we using Kepler as a bus transfer right now? Do we transfer even students there?
We were at the start of the school year, but because we've had vacancies, um, in some of those routes, currently right now, we're not using it, but I think.
So, we don't know whether we're gonna use it or not.
If, if we didn't have access to it, we would figure out another location if we have the need to transfer students.
So, we do have a recommendation on the table to surplus Kepler, but not McFeeters Bend with the right to say, okay, if this doesn't work out, we will, we can always come back and surplus McFeeters Bend.
I understand the pros and cons, I think if, you know, just if you write it down on paper, for McFeeters, I think there's a lot of pros to keeping that. There's a, there's a big con though, I get what you're saying, cause it's, it's the emotion of the, of the closing of the school, that's, that's, that's the con and that's a big, you know, people care about that, that's.
Well, that was, you know, you, you look at it, both of the schools was the hub of their communities.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm sure, just like with many, I still have that tender heart for Kepler and McFeeters Bend, cause I have a connection with both schools. And I can see what the community, it's just like the voting precincts. Kepler and, uh, McFeeters Grand are voting precincts. I realize that at McFeeters Bend, we can go use the fireball, but Kepler, they're, you know, churches were not gonna allow that. So, there is no place except that school for that. And we kinda made an tentative agreement with them, didn't we? That they can use it as long as we've had the facility.
Yeah.
But we can't keep something just for one group of people, but, you know, I, I realize that. And I've asked the election commission what they're gonna do with no voters, no voting precinct that Kepler.
You know, I, I asked for this meeting because a lot of folks started coming up to me and saying, hey, if you close the schools now, you said she's gonna do something with them, what are you gonna do? So, and I'm not saying that to pressure anybody, but that's why we're here tonight is to make these decisions as a board to move forward, uh, cause we can't remain stagnant. We, we need to do something. So, we've got a recommendation and I'll just, uh.
Can I tweak it?
Yes, please.
Um, I'm not opposed to using McFeeters Bend for CTE, for pathways, for, uh, professional library, for the bus library. I'm not opposed to using that at this time. I like the idea of that we look at that year by year. Um, you know, I would kinda stipulate, just like the voting, there's a place for, um, where people are used to going. It's hard when they change and have to go to other places. Um, well, I kinda think they're reduced for two too, so. Yeah.
Probably not.
I don't know yet. And, uh, but at Kepler, I just, I don't wanna surplus it, but just. I think that there might be a, a further use from us and, and I don't want that to be a hard thing. I want it to be a, a decision that's, um, based on facts. And I see it in wrote notes tonight, uh, pros and cons, uh, both sides of the, uh, that, you know, just like the bus transfer. And I'm sure we could find another place, but there's not a whole lot of places out there, a lot of throwback.
I think, uh, in addressing either community concerns, the biggest expense was, was the, or the burden on the local dollars was the staffing cost of old schools. So, that's, so that's been resolved. And we've, we've absorbed and, and, and we don't pay for two extra schools, two additional schools this year compared to last year, uh, worth of staff. We do, as long as we own the properties, we have some maintenance costs because we're obviously mowing, we're taking care of the weeds, we're making sure everything stays locked. If there's broken windows, we'll replace them, all that stuff. And that type of maintenance cost is minimal, but it does increase the more time a building sits vacant. And that's just the normal, whether it's a house, whether it's a commercial building, whatever the case is, so you're going to have, no matter if we make sure that the gates are locked at Kepler, that type of thing, and I drive by it every day, uh, there's going to be things that occur to it because it's, it's vacant, they're known to be vacant. That, that's the, I think, the biggest concern because it's not a money drain at this point. It's minimal. We are expending some maintenance, like I said, in, in landscaping and, and general security and some electricity because we keep things going, but the longer that something sits vacant, the more prone it is to disrepair, rundown, damage, uh.
That's why I wanna go out there and then, I could make a more, uh, brand new decision. If I see it by myself, now, the biggest thing that you have said to convince me to surpluses is the sewer. Now, you know, I, I'm not dumb and I'm not a narcissist, you know? So, when you said the sewer, and I know what that.
You're, you're probably.
We're talking big bugs.
Two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, I don't know.
I started to drive around.
It's gonna be a hundred to a thousand.
Because I had.
And it does need a roof.
Well, I started to drive around it just so I could see underneath the roof, cause I'm sure I could see in, you know, the condition of the, the wood and the, the frames and stuff that's around it. And then I would be able to say, okay, we're not gonna be able to use this school anymore for anything. Now, if I can say that, then I'm okay with surplus.
If you, if you look at just the general construction of the two buildings and that, and that's what makes the biggest difference. Okay, you have McFeeters Bend, which is a concrete slab or directly.
Right.
On the ground with the exception of where the bathrooms are, where it has a crosstalk center. But it's, it is a concrete slab with block, brick walls and a concrete roof. Okay, I mean, it's a pretty secure, pretty easily.
Rebar footing.
Yeah, it's a pretty easy to maintain building. Now, if you go to Kepler, which is the same, we look at the construction of it, you have your concrete footers, you have multi-wafed brick, there's no block. It is actually multiple levels of brick. But that was general construction back then. Then you have wood framing for the flooring, you have wood framing for the roof. It's just, it is not, it's not as easily maintained as a concrete structure. It's just not.
Well, by me, I mean, it's correct on the hill, the, the lower part of the building, it's probably on concrete.
It is on concrete with a chip.
Right, and on the upper part of here, uh, you're gonna have, uh, I know that there's a problem to fix lens, uh, or pulled up wood to work on the plumbing or the heat.
We don't know that. Cause it is wetting, so it's prone to termites.
But you have, you have.
Let's, uh, let, let's do this, we have a recommendation to surplus Kepler. It's only a recommendation to send it to the board for a vote next week. So, what would be the consensus of the board members tonight to surplus Kepler? As a recommendation.
Yeah, I like that recommendation.
So, we have a recommendation. Is there a consensus here to send that to the board?
It's a discussion, they don't have to, discussion.
Cause there'll be more discussion, that's maybe, that'll give board members time to go evaluate it and go to the school, make the observations and the evaluation of course.
It wouldn't be me to get to know it because I'm not an expert and these fellows know, so it, I wouldn't benefit from going.
Well, I mean.
I have to trust the people that tell me, you know.
What each board member wants to do.
Right, right.
We do need to, because all of this stuff's gonna take time. We can make a recommendation and send it to the board, then we don't know, cause we've got board members not here tonight, we don't know what their feelings are, we don't know. But we, we as a board need to take some sort of action because a recommendation has been made. So, we need to take some, some type of action to go to the full board and then the full board is gonna have to make decisions. And if we're gonna surplus by vote, and that's an if, I'm not saying that it's gonna pass or fail, I'm just saying, here's the timeline. If we're gonna surplus it, then we've got a whole other category of questions that we need answered. So, that's gonna take even more time. So, I think of the recommendation here, the consensus is, is to send it to the board for consideration. Yes.
To declare it surplus?
Yes.
To determine. If, if that's upheld, then that will start the timeline for looking into the process.
Correct.
Payment on costs.
Correct. All these other questions.
Right.
And I think we've answered the question of the solar already, but let's make, let's do it step by step.
We'll get details on the last step.
Yeah. We don't know exactly as we move forward if it is voted to surplus.
Okay.
Either one, or it could be both. But right now, the recommendation was to surplus Kepler. And if I'm not, and if I may, this board is saying, what I've heard from each board member during the conversations is that everybody is in support of utilizing McFeeters Bend to some capacity. Okay.
You didn't hear me say I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily in favor of that.
But there's no recommendation to surplus, is what I'm saying. So, there is some, it's being considered to utilize McFeeters Bend for an alternative school and other activities. And we maintain ownership at no additional cost with the belief that we can surplus that from year to year. Am I correct in that?
Nothing.
Okay. So, any other input on Kepler McFeeters Bend property recommendations at this time? None.